The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this special public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order, moving to our first item of business, closed session. A closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM.
Okay, the time now is 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the board, I'm sorry, pardon me. Let's see. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from the staff and to take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does receive the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance. And that is a repeat, so let me skip down. Okay. There are students and other guests present, so to maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and our comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge?
On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Moving to our next agenda item tonight, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Lakeland Elementary School has served our community for six decades. In August, a new era begins when we opened new Lakeland Elementary School on Rustic Timbers Drive. Tonight's inspiring moment is a farewell tour of Lakeland Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Robert Sitten, current Board President of the UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees. Welcome to Lakeland Elementary. Lakeland Elementary carries a very special place in my heart because I too went to school here many years ago. While the teachers have changed, the administration has changed, one thing that's remained constant, and that's this building's position in our community and the way that they've educated kids. So this year, we celebrate the final year of this grand old building. Yes, that's right. Lakeland Elementary is being relocated on a beautiful, large piece of property, state-of-the-art technology, but the one thing that hasn't changed and will not change is the way we educate kids. We're just excited about the new opportunities of growth. The staff, the faculty is excited, and as a board member, but not just as a board member, as a community member and as a former student, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of what we're doing here today. After over 60 years of service to this community, I want to take one last look. One last look at this grand old building, so follow me.
Hi, my name's Albert, and I'm a fifth grade student at Lakeland Elementary.
Hi, my name is Omar, I'm a fifth grade student at Lakeland Elementary.
Hi, my name is Megan, and I'm a fifth grade student from Lakeland Elementary. We're so excited to take you all on a tour of our building as we get ready to say goodbye to a place that helped create countless memories throughout the years.
This mural was painted by a local artist in 2017.
Although the location has changed, we will still be the Lakeland Wildcats in our new building. And let's say hello to our office staff.
How's it going?
We're so glad you're here.
Enough about them, let's keep this tour moving.
As a part of a remodel, these walls and these walls were added along with additional classroom
It's a beautiful day to be in the garden.
This peace sculpture was added to the garden about 15 years ago when Ms. Glenda Holder was principal here. In 2018, Ms. Bella's kindergarten class created this mural with the help of some talented students and parents. It sure does bring joy to the space.
This is the latest addition of Lakeland Elementary. This addition was added to Lakeland to accommodate additional pre-kindergarten and kindergarten rooms.
The new building has lots of shed spaces and natural lighting that make innovative instructions possible.
This is Mr. Cook. He was the principal here before Mr. Sitten was even born, and was still here after he graduated high school, from 1960 to 1984. Twenty-four years, that's more than twice my age.
Come on, let's go past the playground and onto our gym.
When Lakeland first opened, it was a junior high school with fourth through eighth grade students. Because of that, Lakeland became the only elementary school with a separate gym. Back then, there was no air conditioning, and it sure did get hot. It's great that every UMBLE ISD elementary will have its own gym as part of the 2018
As Lakeland continued to grow, more temporary buildings were put up to accommodate more Wildcats. This oak tree has been here forever, and it's another favorite place to hang. I love its shade on hot days.
Speaking of hot days, let's go back and start with the air conditioning.
This hallway, which where my homeroom is located, was added in 1993. One of the things that has not changed is the cafeteria. Lots of memories of past performances, music, drama, this place has seen it all. The new cafeteria will have windows that look out to a beautiful field.
Well, this is the end of the tour. It's been nice showing you how Lakeland changes over the past year. Now I'm going to hand it to Mr. Sitten so he can close it out.
As a Greek philosopher once said, "Change is the only constant in life." Not unlike this grand old sign that stands behind me. Back in the day, it was perched high on a 20-foot pole. The principal, maybe a teacher or two, would come out with an extension pole and suction cups and individually change every letter on this marquee. Not unlike the various individuals that have walked these halls, taught these students, or administered the campus. For over six decades, this building has made a difference in our community. So I want to finish today by taking you on a visual tour of the history of this building, the students that walked the halls, the teachers that taught those kids, and the various administrators that made this building what it is today, a very proud beacon on the hill for UMBLE ISD.
We are joined tonight by some of the stars of the video, Lakeland students Omar Mavvo, Alberto Martinez, and Megan McQueen. They're, we got one, yay! You did a great job. Congratulations. And Principal Lucy Anderson is also here with us. So this is kind of an extra-special inspiring moment I want to showcase with the board and the community. Tonight's inspiring moment was produced by a summer intern in the Public Communications Office. Natalie Cripple is a 2019 graduate of Kingwood Park High School and a broadcast journalism student at Stephen F. Austin University, and we thank her for her work on this video. On the screen, you will also see a photo of another intern, Jesse Vasquez of Transportation Department. Jesse is a 2021 graduate of Summer Creek High School who interned with transportation as an auto tech student. Last week, he interviewed and was selected to be an entry-level Transportation Department technician. Our Transportation Department has been welcoming auto tech interns for 30 years. Also on the screen is a photo of the students who are Technology Department interns this summer. These 18 current or former UMBLE ISD students are reimaging laptops and setting up computers on our campuses. Nine of the technology interns have earned their Dell Tech Direct certification this summer. Our Chief Technology Officer, Dustin Harden, actually began his career as an intern in the school district where he grew up, and so now, as Chief Technology Officer, he is committed to providing the same type of opportunities and has provided technology internships for UMBLE ISD students and graduates since 2017. I am very proud of our departments as they provide learning opportunities for our students beyond the walls of their high schools and college classrooms. So if we could give a round of applause to all the interns who are contributing to the UMBLE ISD family. Also, we like to hire them up first, so it's definitely a huge benefit for us, like that Transportation Department. All right. Next, superstaffers. Our campus staff members are on summer break. Superstaffer recognitions will resume on the October board meeting when the 2021 school year is underway. That's what I have tonight.
That's fantastic, but I'll save my comments until later. The next item is public comment. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined in the agenda. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Our first signed-up person, do we have anyone signed up? I want to see, Vicki is here? Vicki? Yes, come on up.
Some of you may know me, but my name is Vicki Einen, and I've lived in Atascocita with my husband for 37 years. I am a retired school nurse in the district, and both my children graduated from UMBLE High School, and we don't have any family in the area, but I've always been, and my husband, interested in children. And with this pandemic, I've been a little over the top with some school systems, so I really wanted to thank the school board, start out with really thanking you for having the kids go back to school last August. I have bragged about you around the country, the friends that you did that. And I also commend you for that the kids were not, did not have to wear a face mask unless they were the age of 10, which according to the science that people are supposed to follow, that is the situation, and I was glad to see that. And it really upsets me when I find out, you know, these schools that happen, in fact, I've been known to call them criminal when kids have not been in school. So, and of course, you gave them the different, they can go either way. And also, I believe the school board, Lori Tomy, you were the one that figured out that the numbers weren't quite right? Well, that was very commendable, and actually, my daughter from out of town brought that to my attention, and you made the headlines, but I mean, that was very important. And I will tell you that I looked at the dashboard that you had frequently, and it was up to date, and I think what it did say, which I felt in my common sense and medical knowledge, and that the kids and staff were at a low risk for contracting the virus from their school attendance. It was very apparent. I feel that it was, as I said, I went into the fact, and I've talked to people, there's been a lot of increase in suicides with children from different places because of the depression of not having that social contact. And I do believe, if I'm correct, that the next school year, that it will, they will not be able to, they will not have to wear a mask in school, and I would think that was, I would personally like to encourage that also because I think that's important, and I know the local Y has been wonderful with children, and they haven't had to wear a mask, and they've had no problems, and they were open a year ago in June. I do have a major concern that everybody's hearing about, in fact, I was doing some reading about it today, and it was a little over my head actually, was the critical race theory that's out there. And I think that some of these school systems are actually paying for it, which really makes you even feel a little bit stressed out as a taxpayer. And I think that it's been encouraged, and my thing is I would like to, and I know the governor has a bill that it won't be, not supposed to be allowed in the state, of course, who knows what's going to happen with what's going on with that mess right now, but I really want to say that UMBLE has had always, I've been in the district a long time at various schools, and you've always had a very diverse group of children, and I feel that we don't want anything that's going to shatter the fact that kids need to look at each other, but what they look at, look like, and not who they are. And I think with equity being a big thing now, is I think that is wrong. I think we need to go by equality, equality of opportunity, and I've always felt that UMBLE, looking, and I guess that I've been at North Dalt, I've been at UMBLE Middle.
Yes, ma'am, I hate to interrupt you. I truly hate to interrupt you, but.
Is your minute's over?
Your minute's are over.
But anyway, so I would hope that you would not consider that and really look into it yourself, and that was my main reason to say thank you, but also, I am concerned about what's happening with that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up? Okay. Our next item is comments by individual board members. Tonight, I will start with Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Lamond Dixon. We were afforded the opportunity to attend the, all of the UMBLE ISD high school graduations this week, and I just, it gave me great joy to see our students walk across that stage, and I just wanted to, one more time, congratulate all of the classes from all of the schools for 2021. So congratulations. We, Ken and I are new, and so this summer, we have been doing a lot of training, a lot, a lot of training. So I really wanted to thank Dr. Fagan and thank the cabinet for really opening up your time and really walking us through a lot of new information, and we really, really appreciate it. I know I speak for Ken as well. And lastly, our next board meeting will be the night of August 10th, which is the first day of school. And so I wanted to welcome all the kiddos back to school. I won't get to talk from this dais before then, and welcome back to school and have a great, great, great year.
Okay, next, Mr. Kurzhafer.
Thanks, Madam President. There we go. Foundation update. No?
Not yet. Just your personal comments.
I'm just jumping around, sorry.
Hey, that's good. Your personal comments.
I'll just echo what Ms. Parker said. The board's been so welcoming to both of us, getting us on board, it's a lot, and looking forward to kids going back to school, and thank you. Thank you to the board and Dr. Fagan and your staff. It's been enjoyable. It's been eye-opening. A little different than a golf course. For you golfers out there. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sitten.
All right. You know, Ms. Parker, I will tell you this, the learning doesn't end in year one. I too, I attended summer leadership, and also, the Advocacy Institute, which is normally in DC, we did it virtually this year because some of the venues were still closed, and I think I have somewhere close to 25 continuing ed hours at this point, just for this reporting period, so it doesn't stop there. So just get ready, buckle up. Also want to hope everyone's had a great, great summer. It seems like it has flown by. Kaitlyn is already off to drill team camp this week, and they come back next week working out every day, and August 10th is right around the corner, so get ready to go. I know there's a lot of parents out there going, "Thank God," you know? And then there's others that say, "I don't want my baby to go." So we're just glad that we got a great report tonight on our personnel and our hiring. We're almost fully staffed in UMBLE ISD. Hats off to the HR department and all the hard work y'all have done, and again, kudos to our finance department and Mr. Scarfo and his team. Passing, we passed a balanced budget again for about the 15th year in a row, something like that, so very pleased with all that. And I do have one comment. Yes, while I was not born when Mr. Cook became the principal, he was my principal when I went there. But that was a joy. I've never been more proud to be asked to be part of that and close down one chapter of a historical building in UMBLE ISD and help open a new chapter for those kids and this community. So thank y'all for allowing me to be part of that.
Ms. Tumi.
Who are you kidding? You were born, right? When he became principal? Oh, it was closely thereafter. Yeah, closely thereafter. So I'm going to have to disagree with my colleagues up here. I am not ready to say goodbye to summer yet, so if y'all could just not talk about how summer, how school's about to start right around the corner because I'm still kind of in the middle of summer mode. But I did really enjoy seeing the summer school graduates graduate this week. I'm glad that UMBLE ISD puts on a special ceremony for those that graduate from summer school, and I enjoy participating in that every year. I also just want to say thank you to, you know, the students from Lakeland that participated in the video and the Public Information Office that put it together. I am so excited to see this new Lakeland. I was, before I was on the board, I was a member of the bond, along with Ms. Parker here, a member of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, and I don't know how many people were on that committee, 150, 200? I mean, it was a lot of citizens that came out to serve on that committee, and there was a lot of disagreement on little things that, you know, should we do this, should we do that with the bond? But one thing that there was no disagreement on amongst all of these members of the committee were that we needed to pay attention to those schools that were our oldest schools, and we needed to replace them, and not just piecemeal together, you know, let's do a little addition here or a little addition there where we end up with a maze of piecemeal things, but the limitations on Lakeland were great. I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't do anything more to improve the learning environment for the students at that school. So just, you know, being able to see that process walk all the way through is something that just gets me excited. So I'm excited to see it when it all comes together, and I can't wait to walk through it. We have a lot to talk about tonight, so I'm just going to end, I'm just going to go ahead and end there.
Ms. Morrison.
Well, I too remember Mr. Cook, because when I first came to UMBLE in 1975, Mr. Cook was principal at Lakeland. But it's really exciting to see where the kiddos are moving to and where's the buildings moving to, and we're making great progress. I also want to say kudos to those summer school graduates. They stuck with it, and those, I've never, you know, you think about it, every parent is absolutely ecstatic when they see their child walk across the stage. You can't beat it. There's no better feeling. I don't know that I'm ready for school to start because I watched my senior granddaughter at AHS go and paint her parking space. So all of a sudden, okay, this is it, and then, okay, I've got one in Denton and I've got one here, so, you know, it's like, okay, it's really, really starting. So it is exciting, though. School's starting, the kids will be back, and it is exciting to see our kids back in the buildings, and it was exciting to see them come back to the buildings. So I'm not going to say too much more, so I just know it's going to be a great year.
Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Sitten, I thought you left out a couple of many's when you were talking about many, and you clarified it there, you clarified it with that. Anyway, that was great. I really appreciate seeing that. And Ms. Anderson, I told you to be patient a few years back, and, you know, hang in there, you would get that new school, and so here it comes. So, oh, well, well, you're welcome. I didn't have that as much, but that's, I'm glad. It's awesome, because I always loved coming and volunteering at your school, and it was just a lot of fun, and I look forward to doing it at the new school. Just quickly, I'm not going to talk about going back to school because my comment was, I hope everybody's still enjoying as much as possible the summer break, you know, because it's kind of nice. I hope all of our guys are getting some time here and there. I know a lot of you are kind of still going full guns, but, you know, got a couple more weeks, just try to chill a little bit when you can and recharge those batteries. And the professional development, it's great, all the sessions, participation, that's really good stuff that we do that. And I just, also too, as Ms. Morrison mentioned about the summer graduation, I think it's great. I mean, I enjoyed being there, and I don't know a lot that every district does that, to make that time for those students, and I just think it's a great thing that we do that. for, for those students. And I just think it's a great thing that we, we do that in addition to all the other graduations we have, that we give those chance, those, those students and their parents particularly, the, the opportunity to, to see them walk. That's, it's great. And I'm just going to go a little out of order, because usually when we get to this point with informational items regarding finance, there's nobody here. So I just wanted to just give a shout out to our tax department again for such a great job they're doing. Their, their rate is actually over the same point last year, and actually for the total for last year, they're at almost 99% collection rate of our, of our taxes, which is really an important thing, because that's a good way of how we pay for what we do. So, so Mr. Beatty and Ms. Hempel, great job with, with what they're doing there. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm in agreement with, I think, I don't know if that was a quorum or not, but I'm enjoying summer as well. So I'll stay in that mode. First of all, I would like to say congratulations to the summer graduates. It was wonderful to see so many kids complete their requirements to move forward. The tenacity is undeniable, especially during COVID, especially. Mr. Sitten, thank you for clarifying that, you know, you weren't born after 1984. I was, I thought I had my numbers wrong there, but, no, but in all honesty, though, just the whole entire Inspiring Moments presentation, you did a fantastic job. I'm sure it's very special for you to kind of see all of that come to fruition. And also, Mr., is it Alberto? Yes. Wonderful job to you and your classmates and the communications team. And then that leads me right into the interns. I mean, I don't know if I knew that we had so many interns working in the district, and that is truly a phenomenal thing. So happy that we are, we're doing that. And the only other thing I have really is that I'm looking, so summer is still going on, so the week before school starts, we host the Junior Olympics AAU, and I'm very excited about that. Actually, my goddaughter is a number two national 800 runner in the country, and she'll be here. And I'm very excited to hopefully get a chance to see her run. That's all I have. Thank you, everybody. Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. So I'm glad you mentioned the Junior Olympics. Of course, with COVID and things, no one was really sure how that would play itself out. But currently, there are over 15,000 athletes registered to participate in the Junior Olympics at Turner Stadium, beginning on August, or no, July 31st, for about seven days. And Brian Telfer is really excited about that, because he has about four construction projects right there. So only 15,000 athletes and their families. The mayor of Uble is very excited, though. So, so we have ups and downs on that. But we will warmly welcome them, and we really appreciate our partnership with the Houston Sports Authority. They collaborate with us by hosting the Junior Olympics in our facility, and as a result, they make capital improvements and investments in the Turner Stadium and facility. So the latest one was that they replaced the track for us. So we're very, very grateful for that partnership. I hope you saw in the Lakeland video all the kids with the instruments and, and thought to yourselves, wait, those are elementary students, because I'm very proud of the work that's been done at Lakeland with the Performing Arts Wheel and the opportunities that's affording students to participate in choir and band and orchestra, theater, dance, and all of those, eventually mariachi, UIL opportunities. So I was glad that that made the cut. And I too am very proud of the internships that we offer our students. It allows us to have the opportunity to be their employer and see how Uble ISD does at preparing our students for the workforce. So it's sort of a, you know, kind of a full circle experience there, and we would like to continue to build out and develop those opportunities for our students during the summer. It's wonderful for the district, wonderful for them, and it does give us the first chance to hire them. So that's also a great benefit. The summer has flown by, and I don't think, I think people have tried to squeeze in little breaks here and there, but one department that has not would be Ann Johnson and her department, who has done professional development. I get texts like every week, "Look at this professional development we're doing. This is going so well." So anyway, a huge shout out to all the curriculum instruction professional development folks. They spend countless hours providing the highest quality PD that you'll find anywhere for our teachers. Hopefully, you see some of the reactions on Twitter. I actually get emails from teachers that say, "This is the best PD I've ever had in my life." They really love it, and they sign up for the sessions that are most meaningful to them. And it's not only the information they need, but it's presented in a way that is best for instruction. So all of the folks who are participating in that, thank you for your time and efforts and the quality. You really are the, the best foot forward for Uble ISD during the summer with our teaching staff and others. So thank you. We are getting ready to open two new campuses. Autumn Creek Elementary School and Lakeland Elementary School will open on time. We have moved buses north to the new transportation center. I hear it is beautiful. I haven't been up there yet, though. And that will save us about $2 million a year in deadhand miles, where our drivers won't have to drive from Uble to Kingwood and back to Uble and back and forth and back and forth. They'll just be up there in the north. And so we're excited about that, too. So full speed ahead for Uble ISD. It is going to be a great year, like Ms. Morrison said. We're going to have a lot of opportunities for students. Excited for the new CTE wheel to launch. Lark and Lesour and his folks have done incredible job propping that up overnight. And we just have a lot of great plans for our students based on what they want, what they need to achieve their goals and their dreams. And if you didn't see it, I hope you see the newsletter that went out from the Public Communications Department. It is extraordinarily well-done, very informative, highlights all of the most important things. Ms. Dixon has a wonderful column in it. And anyway, I just highly recommend it. I'm not a big newsletter gal, but I love that one. It is really, it's, it's worth your time. It's posted on our website if you didn't get it, but hopefully you got a hard copy, too. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Our last opening item is updates from our board associations and committees. The first committee is the Advocacy Committee. Ms. Toomey.
So I'm going to defer my comments from, about the Advocacy Committee, because we have an agenda item on something related to that.
Okay, perfect. Next Audit Committee, Ms. Morrison.
Yes, we have an Audit Committee meeting in August, and currently, our Audit Department is still working on program and department audits. And they are also working on the yearly risk assessment and safety budget development, cell phones, vehicles, and secondary counseling exit audit. Those are the things, you know, right off the top of the list. It's only a few, but we'll have our next meeting in August.
Okay, thank you. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitten.
Yes, as you all know, as you drive around the, the district, there's nothing going on construction-wise. So, especially on the corner of Will Clayton and Wilson Road. But as Dr. Fagan mentioned, we are opening two new schools, and also the brand-new Gasconzo Early College High School. Now, you'll see several agenda items with some change orders. Those change orders are for substantial completion dates, but they all, they're all on, they're all, they will all be opened on day one. Let's, let's put it that way. So we've got, we've got the, the Sconzo Project, we've got Lakeland, we've got Autumn Creek. We're still, we've got the, the transportation, we've got the North Agbarn that they're still working through, multi-campus mechanical renovations, movements of T-b buildings also. So lots and lots of stuff going on in that department. And I tell you, it's, it's exciting to see the, the innovation, renovation, and I guess, in a certain sense, a redevelopment of Uble ISD as we move from the, I believe Ms. Toomey said in her opening comments, as we move from the old to the new. And being able to take care of, you know, when I went to school, you had Lakeland, Foster, and North Belt. And Lakeland and, and North Belt are getting rebuilt at this point. And hopefully, we'll be able to do the same thing with Foster in the next bond referendum. Sterling Middle School was the original Uble Middle School after the transition to the current location of Uble High School. So hopefully, we'll get to redo that in the future, if that's a necessity. So I'm excited about it. I'm excited about where we're headed construction-wise. But yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on, and you're, you should all have the minutes. But here is the, on the agenda, there's a lot of things going on. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that is me. Just to let the committee know, I'm working on some dates, and I will be in touch with Karen, and she'll be sending those out. And there is nothing to report at this time. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Madam President. We have pushed back our date to, instead of our July meeting, we're going to have it towards the end of August, August 23rd. And the reason being, in talking with Mr. Beatty, it seemed pretty obvious, we weren't going to have enough information in some really key areas, that it really made sense to get together at the end of, in our regularly scheduled July meeting. I would have been nice to just get together everybody and have some meat, but we wouldn't have gotten much work done, because there were really, we just don't have the data. But, but as we get towards that point in August, we will, and we'll be able to, you know, kind of get into some of those weightier items. So that's why we postponed it. So that's our next meeting coming up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Education Foundation, Mr. Kurzachter.
Okay, take two. Here we go. Foundation update. Although I haven't officially attended a Foundation Board meeting yet, because the meetings don't start until August, I do have an update to share with you tonight. Joining me on the Foundation Board this year are five new directors that I would like to announce. They are Monica Humphrey, Chase Stevens, Julie Jeter, Marcus Holmes, and Tracy Slaughter Holmes, who is not related to Marcus, to clarify. I'd also like to recognize Kim Riley, who is rolling off the Foundation Board after 18 years of service. Kim chaired the Grants Review Committee for many years and was instrumental in creating the Foundation's grant award process. We are very grateful for her leadership and service to the Foundation. Thank you, Kim Riley, 18 years.
Okay, thank you very much. Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Ms. Morrison. I'm sorry, this is Lori Morrison. Ms. Toomey.
Are we related now, Nancy?
I guess so.
Maybe so. I've always thought of you, you know, as family. Okay, so the Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council has been on, on break for June and July, but we have a meeting August 18th. So nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to be moving on to action items from closed session. Action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Ms. Morrison, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the Administrator's Personnel Recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? 7-0. Item 4B, Withdrawal of the Proposed Non-Renewal of Term Contract. Ms. Morrison, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board withdraw the proposed non-renewal of the term contract of Laura Webb and authorize the Superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? 7-0. Item 4C, Uble ISD Virtual Learning Update. Ms. Morrison, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I'm, I make a motion to delegate authority to the Superintendent to apply for any and all waivers related to the implementation of virtual learning in the 2122 school year and ratification of any and all waiver applications submitted for virtual learning in the 2122 school year.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all.
I'm sorry. Actually, yeah, I want to kind of briefly update sort of where we've come from when it comes to virtual learning. So as I've given an, an update in, in previous board meetings, but in the regular session, virtual learning was a hot topic. Several of us on the Advocacy Committee went up to Austin. We constantly were speaking to people, advocating for different positions. We had worked through the process and had actually had a bill that was approved through the Senate. There was a conference committee, and it was scheduled, because of the way that everything works in the House, you have so many hours after something happens in order, before you can vote on it. So it was scheduled to be voted on at 11:30 of the last day of the session, and we all know that the session ended early. So it was not able to be voted on. So what, what that left us with at the end of the regular session was no funding for virtual education. So going forward, no funding. Now, that was not what we wanted to hear, because what we found out, listen, everyone on this board knows that face-to-face learning, in-person learning, is the best option for the vast majority of students in our district. But one of the things that we learned through COVID is that there are a significant number of our students that did really, really well in virtual. And, you know, when we first started virtual, we kind of had to throw together. We were in the middle of a pandemic. We, you know, we, we put together what was best for them at the time. But really, Dr. Fagan and her group, Roger Brown and Terry Perkins, I mean, the whole group has been working really, really hard to structure something that would be awesome for next year. We had, we had teachers put together, we did professional development, put programs together for an excellent virtual program for next year. And at the end of the regular session, we were left like, what do we do? We've got no funding. And guys, you know, you may think, oh, well, it's just not, you know, you're just missing out on a little bit of funding. No, we're talking about a lot of funding. With no, we're talking, you know, 15 to 25 million dollars kind of on the table here. So it's significant to our budget. So then, we, we, we started, we got on the phones again, we started talking to people. And I, you know, spoke with Keith Bell's office last week. We've, we've got it as part of the special session, right? They, they introduced a new bill. Then we have another stallout in our special session. Ms. Parker was actually up in Austin advocating for us last week. And again, we're still stalled. So we have been, this particular board, this particular administration, has been moved, trying to move heaven and earth to do what's best for our students in our district and to provide options for those students to learn in whatever way is best for them. And as, again, for the vast majority of kids, that's face-to-face, but some of the kids, it's having an option for virtual. So as a, sort of a last-ditch Hail Mary type of an effort, what we are doing with this motion is giving Dr. Fagan the ability to go, and we've been talking with, with TEA, and apply for a waiver in order to allow us to continue, because without that waiver, we, we literally will not be able to do what we have been working and, and very hard to do. So I just would advocate that, that everyone vote in favor of allowing us to seek this waiver and do what's best for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Toomey. Well said. Mr. Sitten.
You know, yes, I was part of those conversations, but I want to thank you, Ms. Toomey, for all the hours you've put in on this, all the research you've done on this, the constant communication that you've had with the legislators and with the, the previous Advocacy Committee. And just, just to reiterate and clarify for anyone that's watching, because there's a lot of misconception out there. We are doing everything possible to have a virtual option for our students for those that need it. But without legislative action, there is no funding. And matter of fact, Dr. Fagan was on the phone with the Commissioner the last three days in a row, trying to get this done, trying to get this, the language in a waiver that, that would work. And we're still not there. So what we're doing is taking formal action to allow her to continue that process. But at some point in time, we're going to have to move forward, because school starts August 10th. And, you know, if we do not get that waiver from TEA, we're going to have to, we're going to have to start school. And, and that's, that's the bottom line there. If we do get the TEA waiver, there's, there's a no-win situation here for our administrators, for our staff. Master scheduling is a nightmare, because it's still up in the air. And we've got to, well, actually, we've given TEA a, a drop-dead time and date twice now, just, just so, just so our administrators and our counselors can work through those master schedules. So that's where we're at. And, and again, thank you all for everything that you've done and, and, and reaching out to your contacts and your legislators that, that you're familiar with, that you have a good relationship to. And, and Dr. Fagan, thank you for, well, most people don't realize you haven't had a summer vacation. And Dr. Fagan, thank you for, well, most people don't realize, you haven't had a summer vacation. You haven't taken time off, and I commend you for that. I wish you would. I begged you to take some time off, but I know it's been your dedication to this district and the time it takes, and with all the moving parts that we're trying to work through, I want to thank you and your team for all the work you've done as well. But I did want to make sure people understood that we haven't turned a blind eye to this. We're working hard trying to get it done, and, you know, there's only so much you can do without help from Austin, so.
Any other discussion from board members? Yes, Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. We're probably looking at, there's a lot of impact to this whole thing if we can't provide an option. There's probably close to 2,400 students whose parents have told us that, I'm just not comfortable right now, and especially with what's going on in our community across the country with this very transmissible variant. We're all aware of that, and I think we really need to work to give them an option. And Dr. Fagan, her team has, just as the comment was made, moving heaven and earth to try to come up with something. And she was on the phone with the Commissioner not long before we went into closed session. So it's something that we keep hammering. But we're, in talking about the dollars we're at risk for losing, I mean, it's well, almost $19 million just on the ADA, on the weighted average yearly attendance. And then there's the other aspect that I had forgotten about, but when I spoke with Dr. Fagan the other day, and we were talking about the money side of things, we could become no longer a fast-growth district, and that has its own set of ramifications. So that's multimillion-dollar losses of possible revenue and support there, too. So I really believe that we're in a, one of those really rockin' hard places, but I think just like this administration, Dr. Fagan, her team, and the Board, last year at this time, or maybe a little past that, in the last August, showed a vision to roll the dice, take a chance, and lead. So there's probably not a lot of districts that are trying to do this, but thank you, Dr. Fagan, for taking that mantle on again, and I think we're just, we're going to do it. We're going to roll the dice and hope that this will work out and that we can find a workaround to the craziness that's gone on because of some balls getting dropped in Austin. And Ms. Toomey, thank you, I know, serving on the Committee, and Ms. Parker, too. You guys have done a yeoman's job trying to push things forward for us, for the district. So with that, I'll just say that that's where I feel on this in terms of why we need to support trying to find this option for our students, parents, and the district as a whole. Thank you, Ms. Mon Dixon.
Thank you. Any other discussion from board members? Yes, Ms. Toomey?
Sorry, one other last thing I wanted to mention, and I forgot to mention this just a minute ago. When the special session ended, or not the special session, when the regular session ended in the way it did and leaving the virtual learning hanging out there with no funding, almost every other district that was talking about providing virtual as an option immediately abandoned it. We, as a district, did not feel that that was in the best interest of our students, so we have kept fighting because we feel that strongly that providing options that meet the students in the place that that student is, is what is best for our students. And so we will keep fighting until we can't fight anymore. We've already had two drop-dead deadlines. Let's see if we can get it done by the third, but I just want to say thank you, Dr. Fagan, for doing the hard thing, because this is not the, it would have been easy to just say, no, we can't do it. But I've never known Dr. Fagan to take the easy way out. She does what's right for students, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Anyone else?
No. I'd also like to thank Dr. Fagan and her team, and I think even if you just listen to the passion and the words of everyone up here, we have the same sentiments. Everyone is working really hard. I know I've reached out to a couple of my contacts that I have not heard back from, Ms. Parker, but I am working on it as well. So it is truly a team effort from many different angles. So I'm hopeful that we will pass this in just a few minutes so that you can carry it forth. Okay, we have a second, so all those in favor? Okay, 7-0. Thank you very much. Moving to item 5, our consent agenda. A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, June 8, 2021. Consent. Item B, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, June 15, 2021. Consent. Item 5C, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, June 29, 2021.
Pull.
Pull.
So I think that's the one I couldn't attend, so.
Okay, we'll come back. Item D, 5D, Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Consent. Item E, 2021-2022 Construction and Construction Related Purchases. Consent. Item F, Budget Transfers and Amendments Including Non-Recurring Expenditures, ISC Mitigation and Child Nutrition Increase. Consent. Item G, Tax Refunds. Consent. Item H, Waiver of PNI. Consent. Item I, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Consent. Item J, Approval of RFP Number 2021-003R-0501, Supplies, Equipment, and Services for Students with Disabilities. Consent. Item K, Approval of RFP Number 2021-005-03R, General Merchandise. Consent. Item L, Approval of RFP Number 2021-006-003R, Educational Service Consultant. Consent. Item M, Approval of RFP Number 2021-007R-02A, Educational and Curriculum Subscriptions, Internet Web-Based Access and Software. Consent. Item N, Approval of RFP Number 2021-009R-03, Restaurant and Catering Services. Consent. Item O, General Contractor Selection for Emergency Operations Center, EOC Additions and Renovations Projects, CSP 2021-026. Consent. Item P, Deductive Change Orders. Consent. Ms. Morrison, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A, 5B, 5D, 5E, 5F, 5G, 5H, 5I, 5J, 5K, 5L, 5M, 5N, 5O, and 5P.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? 7-0, thank you. We had one pulled item.
Yes, Madam.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam President, I move to approve the minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, June 29, 2021.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? 6-0, well, one abstention? And one abstention?
One.
Lori, Ms. Toomey?
Lori. Okay.
Okay, we'll move on now to our action items. Item 6A, Resolution Approving COVID-Impact Retention Stipend Plan. Ms. Morrison, please read the item in the form of a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board adopt, Board adopt a resolution concerning COVID-Impact Retention Stipends for the 2021-2022 Employment Year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Toomey. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? 7-0. Motion passes. Item 6B, Tasby Board of Directors Candidate Endorsement. Position 4A, Ms. Morrison, please read the item in the form of a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the endorsement of Georgianne Wrightmeyer for election to the Tasby Board of Directors, Position 4A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one comment that I'd like to make. I know, I know several of us up here do know Ms. Wrightmeyer. She has done an excellent job on the Tasby Board. She is the incumbent, and I look forward to supporting her.
All those in favor? Six, any abstentions? One. So six yays, one abstention. Our next item is item 6C, Tasby Board of Directors Candidate Endorsement, Position 4B. Ms. Morrison, please read the item in the form of a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the endorsement of Darlene Bro for election to the Tasby Board of Directors, Position 4B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Six, any abstentions? And one, one abstention. Thank you. The motion passes. Our next item is item 6D, Tasby Board of Directors Candidate Endorsement, Position 4C. Ms. Morrison, please read the item in the form of a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the endorsement of Tony Hopkins for election to the Tasby Board of Directors, Position 4C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, Madam President, I just want to say, I've worked with Mr. Hopkins quite a bit with Greta Houston, and he will make an excellent person for that position.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a quick comment on this. You know, with these positions, sometimes we wait until we get to Tasby to vote on the floor. I think this slate is very strong and really will look out for our best interest. I think several, several of my colleagues have strong relationships with these folks, and that's why I was very glad to see the actual endorsements here without waiting to go to Dallas in September.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sitton. All those in favor? Any abstentions? Okay, we have six and then one abstention. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next is our information item. Next are our information items. Item 7A, Literacy and Math End-of-Year Progress Monitoring Report. Let's go.
All right. You may remember, a number of months ago, we gave you an update on literacy and math. This is part of the House Bill 3 reporting requirements, and this is the second presentation, so I'd like to invite Melissa Hayhurst and Neta, I believe, is coming also. I don't, Anne, no. Okay. Yeah, she waved. Anyway, I'd like to invite Melissa Hayhurst up to provide the Board with an update on our literacy and math performance. And of course, as you all know, a year ago in March, school pretty much shut down overnight and turned to an online, and everything was up in the air, and so the whole state saw a bit of a retraction from that. And then this past year, our teachers have worked so hard to catch our students back up and get them back on a growth curve. So I'm very, very proud of our elementary teachers who have tackled this reading issue and worked so hard this year, even in very difficult circumstances. And I think our memories are short, but this was, this was a challenging year, and they, they really did move the needle. So congratulations to the elementary teachers on their literacy work this year. Very proud of what you're about to see in that arena. Thank you.
So thank you, Dr. Fagan. You stole a little bit of our thunder here, but Neta really is going to take some time and explain our end-of-year report. This is just a reminder to the Board, this is part of our local accountability. We are required by the state to have district goals for House Bill 3, and we will be coming back to you in either September or October with some recommendations for those targets. But we wanted to close out the year with our literacy and math report, and so I am going to turn it over to Ms. Whitaker, and then I'll close this out and give a summation of some other assessments. So, Ms. Whitaker?
Absolutely. Good evening. So just like Melissa said, this one.
Yes, and I can do it for you if you'd like.
Sure. Dr. Fagan pretty much introduced this first slide. We're going to talk about the success from our 2020-2021 school year, and like she said, this was not an easy year. So our teachers were really innovative in trying to reach our students virtually through a pandemic, and we showed a lot of success. One of the things that we're really proud of is our partnership with the principals this year. We've worked really closely together to look at our literacy assessment data, to provide targeted campus support. This has led to extensive professional learning at the district level and at the campus level, where we personalized our support to our campuses. We had many mid-year data meetings where we opened up those literacy assessments and really analyzed the data to find targeted areas for support. We have a process that we use that the campuses have adopted as well, so we have a clear process there, and it's led to an increase in guided reading and small group instruction, which we're really proud of because that's where we start to personalize instruction for students. It's also led to an increase in our explicit phonics instruction in K through 2, which has helped with our literacy data as well. So this first slide is really informational for you. You guys have seen this before. It's our district literacy assessment data from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, and it's for grades 1 through 3. It shows our performance and progress. You've seen this one before. This next slide shows our middle-of-year data, data to our end-of-year data, so it's showing progress again. We see our students are above the line, which is our increased performance line, so our campuses are showing progress because of the things I just mentioned before. This last slide is really what I want to pay attention to because it's showing our district literacy assessment data from beginning of year to the end of year, and this is a summary of our year. This shows our campuses really showing that progress. All of our campuses are above the line, so we're really proud of this. In the middle of a pandemic, we still move forward with our literacy assessment data and our response to that data. And Lucy was saying this in the principals' meeting the other day. This shows what can happen when we have a literacy assessment data that gives us targeted information about our students. We have a partnership with principals. We can respond to that data. We can train teachers and be responsive to their needs as well as our student needs, and we're all on the same page, so we can see this growth district-wide, and we're really proud of this.
Can you just talk a little bit about what the assessments are for the grades 1, 2, through 3? What were, you know, in terms of, and what targets mean?
Yeah.
Just want to kind of understand, so, all right, so I can see the movement across the line, but how is it being measured and what's exactly being measured in terms of assessment?
Absolutely. So on this next slide, it really shows what you're asking, Mrs. Scarfo. So we measure our literacy assessment data with our reading levels, comprehension levels, and fluency accuracy rate. So what you're seeing here is we have a benchmark at the end of the year, and we back map that benchmark for middle-of-year, where our students should be, and then beginning of the year. Because we have those benchmarks throughout the year, we're able to see if our students are progressing. We have a snapshot of that student every time and take that assessment that we can respond to. So for example, in first grade, if they're going to be an I at the end of the year, we back map that, and we say by middle-of-year to make progress towards that reading level of an I that includes their comprehension and reading accuracy rate, they should be on an F. If they're not on an F, we look at their targeted instruction data from literacy assessment. We respond to that data in small group instruction. We also look at trends and patterns, and we respond to that through professional development as well. So we're building our teacher content knowledge and helping them to respond to their students' needs. So this, this graph shows that our first and second grade students made a lot of progress, at least 10% from middle-of-year to end-of-year, from one reading level to our end-of-year benchmark. And again, our reading level's increasing complexity. The cognitive demand is more extreme on students from middle-of-year to end-of-year, and we're still seeing that growth. Also, in third grade, you do see a plateau at the end of the year, but just like I said, that cognitive demand increases. It's a little harder to increase from one reading level to the next once we get to the higher reading levels, like an N and a P, because the text complexity is more difficult. So you see that plateau, but we are working with our third-grade teachers on what to do in responding to students individually at their level. We're also increasing word study support as well, so students increase their accuracy when it comes to reading as well as their comprehension.
In the future, we're excited because you'll be able to see the students progress from C to F to I to K. C to F to I to K. What you're looking at are different students, right? Our first and our second and our third grade, because we've only done this for one year in total like this. So, but going forward, we'll be able to show those cohorts continue to move up as they progress through the grades.
Absolutely. Okay, so we'll look at our math data next. What I really want to say as I set up this math data is that we are working very hard. We understand that there was a trend across the state in math data trending low, so there's a concern across the state. We have that same concern in our district as well. So what we're working towards is making sure that we have the correct data so that we can respond to our students. This first graph you've seen before, it shows math data from beginning-of-year to middle-of-year for grades 1 through 3. The second graph you've seen as well, it shows middle-of-year to end-of-year, and our students' progress and performance from middle-of-year to end-of-year. This last graph shows beginning-of-year to end-of-year. So this is a summary of the entire year, and what we're doing is, we're trying to build, we're working on building a math assessment that's similar to the literacy assessment. We have three assessments for grades K, 1, and 2 right now in progress. We're ready to launch a pilot in the fall with a small group of campuses, just so we don't overwhelm our teachers because they have a lot going on right now. We want to give them right data, accurate data. The literacy assessment provides us that information, so we're working on that math assessment to give us that same information for our students and our teachers.
So our literacy assessments are based upon our local accountability program that you guys have put together. The math is not, it hasn't fully launched yet in terms of those local assessments, correct? Right, so this one is based upon?
This is based on a computer-based assessment, and we know that we can't get the right, the same amount of data that's targeted for our students with an electronic assessment, especially for students age 6 to 10, right? So we're working on something that's one-to-one, just like our literacy assessments, so that teachers can see behaviors, teachers can see that strategies that students use, and they can help them by responding to those strategies that students use. We're in progress of building that right now, and we're going to start a small pilot this fall to help us with that.
Thank you, because I really do think that especially in math, that these computer-based assessments don't really give you an accurate picture of our students in math, so.
It's one of the things that Dr. Johnson, as we were reviewing and preparing for tonight, I think the words that she used that are so accurate is, "It's a snapshot."
Yeah.
And that's really all it is, is a snapshot. And so when you think about taking a group of 22, 23 second graders in a classroom, and we put them all on a computer, and they complete their assessment, it just, the personalization that you have with one-on-one as opposed to a classroom assessment, we feel a lot more confident and comfortable with the results that we get with one-on-one. And not only does it support that targeted instruction that Ms. Whitaker was referring to, but what the literacy assessments to me, that has also been powerful, is allowed us to see where we need to shore up support to individual teachers who may be struggling. I mean, it's, that is not an easy task, and as a secondary, especially high school, that was just not something that we were accustomed to doing. And when I see what the elementary teachers do, and you think about they're fresh out of college, and so it has provided us with just a wealth of data that then Neta and the team have been able to work with Ms. Schultz and sharing with the elementary principals. And again, it's one of those, I wish you could be in those data analysis meetings, and just the conversation that is occurring among the principals and with the ELA team is just, it's just powerful. I wish I could think of another word, but it really is.
Ms., can I say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm glad you brought this up. This is an off-the-shelf assessment. It is Star-aligned. A lot of the math teaks in the STAR are extraordinarily difficult for the developmental of the students. They do that so that they can measure the top end, the master's stuff, and as a result of that, it's definitely a stretch, particularly in a COVID year for a lot of students. And we get a lot of false positives and negatives off computer assessments. A lot of little kids just click stuff, and it looks really bad. And the reality is, they do know how to do a lot more than is shown in this. But I wanted to highlight Neta's work a little bit. If you could go back to the beginning-of-year to the end-of-year reading. If you look at School 21, and we mask these on purpose, but I just need to point this out for a second. So if you look at School 21, you'll see at the beginning of the year, they had 24%, right? And that was a concern. That was a concern at that campus. 24% of their students met target. And so Neta and her team went out there, and they really did what I would call targeted support to the team. And at the end of the year, they went from 24% to 60%, over 60% of their students who met the target. Now, why is that so significant? Because the targets were even harder, because the targets get more difficult throughout the year. So now you went from 24% on the easy to 60% on the difficult. That's the impact of that CNI team going out, working directly with teachers, helping them understand what the data says and how to intervene and work with the students. So congratulations to you, Neta. You and your team are very, very impressive. The work that you've done in this literacy is really second to none, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, and Ms. Whitaker, Ms. Hayhurst, also, could you elaborate a little bit on, I know, Ms. Hayhurst, I've heard you speak a little bit about how we also reach our parents and having them assist our students, Ms. Whitaker? Either one of you?
Absolutely. So I do, I want, and that was something that Anne and I had an opportunity to share with the new board members. I forget, was it this week or last week?
Yes, at the new board member orientation, yes.
It's all important. So I would like Neta to talk with you because it, again, that's another piece of this that's.
Yeah, so there is a parent report that goes along with our literacy assessments. It shares with the parents how their students are performing, and it really breaks down the categories and the targeted support that's being provided to their students. So it gives them an intro into the classroom, what's happening with that teacher and their students. They can respond to it as well, so everyone's on the same page. I think that's a really important piece of this work, is that our parents are on board, our principals are on board as well, and our teachers are on board. And Dr. Fagan, when you were talking about Elementary 21, I just want to say this, that that principal at that campus was really important. She was hands-on, responsive. We collaborated a lot and problem-solved a lot. So it's a partnership between teaching and learning and our campus principals as well. We work together very closely.
Any other comments or discussion from board members as we're going? Yes, Mr. Scarfo.
So the target you're talking about then for the literacy assessment is the reading level that you, you're saying that they start the year, you know, we test them, and you can decide, okay, they're at reading level A, B, C, or D, whatever, X, Y, Z. And then, so then you're measuring, so that's the target, that's what you're measuring?
Yes.
It's not some other kind of?
Well, I want to point out that within that reading level, we have a comprehension rubric, and it is aligned to our standards. So they are looking at fiction and nonfiction genres, and within that, their comprehension targets and metacognitive targets that they have to hit to be considered proficient at that reading level in alignment with the fluency rate and their accuracy rate. So there's a lot that's involved in that reading level.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And for little kids, there's other things that you do, like holding the book correctly. And I mean, there's all these little targets, and then, and it's filled out for the parents so they can see some of the things that they can work on at home.
Absolutely. For our smaller kids, we have concepts about print, which is what Dr. Fagan is talking about, where we're just seeing if they understand they have book and print awareness. Can they hold the book correctly? Can they, they have the right directionality from left to right? Because you'd be surprised, it might be upside down, it might be right to left. So that really shows their proficiency in being ready to read. Then we look at their phonemic awareness, which means, can they hear sounds? Can they blend sounds and put them together? So there's a lot that's engulfed in that, what you're looking at today.
Quick question, real quick. Obviously, we mask our elementary student, or, you know, we make it through schools by number, right? Because we're not calling out any particular school. Did you use the same masking numbers for the literacy as you did for the math? So 21 is going to be the same for literacy as it is for math? Okay.
I believe Dr. Rohn did that, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Not you as an individual.
Yeah.
Only Dr. Rohn knows.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just a quick comment. There's been several times throughout the course of my tenure that we've beat up the STAR as not a reliable source of student achievement, and I want to commend you all for this. Because we've talked about how the STAR exam is not, if it says meeting or mastering and this, it really has nothing to do with the actual grade level and reading comprehension, and this is doing that. And that's what we're excited about. I know when we brought in the commissioner, I guess it was two years ago now because of COVID, when we brought the commissioner in, and he saw the beginnings of this. And Representative Huberty was chairman of public ed at the time, and he was able to experience this as well. I think they're going to be really, really excited to see how that's progressed over the last two years. And, because that was one of the things they would ask, okay, how does the accountability piece work here? And I think you all nailed it, so great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, and for me, speaking, I will speak as a parent, I mean, my baby is an 11th grader, but I, this work is exceptional. Dr. Johnson, Ms. Hayhurst, Ms. Whitaker, I mean, it's truly exceptional work. We all know how important literacy is, and personally, I haven't seen anything like this anywhere. And I commend you all. This is wonderful work, and I'm looking forward to seeing what it looks like next school year and for our students to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And again, I just want to say ditto, because as a former elementary principal, having this data and measuring apples to apples and oranges to oranges and showing the true growth of an individual student, this is such a blessing. And I remember when we asked Dr. Fagan for this, we said, "We just, we just need it, and we have needed it for so many years." I want to compliment your, Dr. Johnson's department. You guys are awesome. There is no better in the state of Texas. Thank you.
Wow, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to close out, there's one thing, and I know Neta and I had discussed it this morning. You know, when you think about the success of the literacy assessments, I think a lot of that has to do with really laying the right foundation. And I know that Anne and Neta and several of us have shared with you, it was about having the right resources, aligning our professional training to those resources, providing an assessment that really targeted instruction. And I would say that we are in a place now with math to do exactly the same. One of the things that I know has been on the ESAR piece is the Bridges, which is a resource and would give campuses an opportunity for us to align those resources. We have obviously the professional learning. And then the piece that I know Dr. Johnson has texted Dr. Fagan several times this week and last week, and we launched our work with our instructional coaches. And the, I just wish you could have heard the conversations that we had with administrators last week, because every single campus administrator, K through 12, we had them in the room. We started with secondary, went to elementary, and then this week, we brought in our instructional coaches and then had an opportunity with administrators and coaches to have conversations. And so I think we are just primed to really launch the math piece. We just have to be very mindful of our system because of the Reading Academy and not really knowing the strain that will put on the system. Although I know the conversations that Lucy has had with principals, they're anxious to get started. And so I feel like we're the ones that are saying, "Okay, we will, but let's get the year started, let's see how," because they are eager to, I think, have that same level of data that we've provided with literacy. And so then just the very last thing, and again, we shared this with our new board members, there are coming attractions for additional pieces on local accountability. Dr. Fagan never lets moss grow under our feet in teaching and learning. And so we are in a place where hopefully we will be able to add assessments to our local accountability. But where we are, both with writing and Portrait of a Graduate, is the progressions are available for teachers to begin using them in the classroom. And then where we go from there from a district perspective, I think is coming. So just again, just a little glimmer of coming attractions. So my friend and supervisor is up, so.
I just wanted to mention that we also started the 4th and 5th grade last year, but because of complications, we had to slow up on those. And so it's full steam ahead this year. Our team has really put together a plan. We have all the training set for next week, actually. And in addition, we have some of our middle schools in the strategies classes that want to use these and have done some preliminary work. So we'll have the transition not only from the elementary all the way up into middle school, which we're very excited about. So stay tuned.
Thank you, because that's actually, I was literally getting ready to ask that exact question when you came up, is what about our older students? And as we're in the coming attractions here, this writing progressions, Anne, you and I have had many conversations over the last two years about writing, and so I'm very excited to see this, especially as we transition this into our older grades.
Well, and especially when you keep in mind, so the state has made so many changes this summer, but one of them was to eliminate 4th and 7th grade writing. And so what I think is critical is, just because the state's not assessing it, doesn't mean we don't need to do it. And it, right, and so it will be working itself into the reading and what exactly that looks like. I think we're still discovering, but that's something that, again, Elementary ELA is integrating that into part of the Reading Academy, because honestly, that's how writing works. It should be married to reading. It's not a standalone for each of those. And so that's what we can look for, I think, I mean, not think, but know in elementary. And then what does that look like for middle and high school? And of course, high school will still have their EOCs with writing for English 1 and English 2, so.
Just one last thing. With regard to our special ed students that are particularly applied skills, do we, have we developed similar kind of assessment tools to the way you just presented to be able to show that same kind of progress? I know, obviously, it's different, but I just wondered if we're focused on that too, that we're being able to look at how those kiddos are doing, and are they progressing the way they need to progress?
So I was going to, well.
Okay. Yes, we have. And we actually have a number of our special ed students who are assessed with these, and we still can assess them. And their growth may not be what some of our other students are, but that's okay because we're not, it's not against students. It's to show their growth. And then we can troubleshoot and identify those, their needs, and form an instructional plan to help them.
And can I point out something that when we provide these instructional plans that are really individualized, it's almost like an IEP in that it's personalized for each student. So we're doing the same model of making sure we understand what students need and responding to that in a targeted, personalized way.
Thanks.
We also have a complimentary one, one more, with our bilingual students and our SIP students and our dual language as well. So we have all those pieces in place. I just, I have to say that I've been in other districts, and the support that you offer to allow us to do this work has really allowed us to move this forward and to be able to do this. So I can't thank you enough. And I also, because of the decisions you've made with resources, have just helped to move this forward even faster. So thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sitten.
You know, I don't want to get too sappy here, and I don't want this to be a love fest, but honestly, y'all have heard me say this for almost 11 years now. Our goal is to go from good to great. We've always had a really strong school district. I'm a product of that. Some of you might go, "Well, I don't know how strong it is if he was a product." But, I mean, I'm proud. I'm proud of this school district. I'm proud of this community. When we brought Dr. Fagan in five years ago, this is exactly why we brought her in. I mean, those of you that were around, this is exactly what we were talking about. So with Dr. Fagan's leadership and her vision, and when she brought Dr. Johnson in, that was a godsend. How in the world she did a sales job to get her to come down here and do this, and then Dr. Johnson, the team that you've assembled.
Aren't they great?
Absolutely wonderful. I'm just, literally, we always talk. Absolutely wonderful. I, I'm just, literally, we always talk about, we want to be that school district, that, that school districts around the state, the region, and the country look, look at for guidance. We started seeing that during COVID. You know, I was in the Northeast for the last two weeks and I had the opportunity to visit with some educators there. And they were amazed that we went to school in August and made it through the entire school year. They didn't go back till April. They didn't go back till April. Think about the harm that you're doing to kids when you keep them out of education. Now you take it a step further and look at the progress. I mean, we're talking a year of kids being in class and the progress they made from, from the beginning of year to the end of the year. And there are school districts out there that literally stopped educating children in basically February, March of 2020 and hadn't started back up yet. And I am proud to be part of this organization, part of this board. And the vision that our leadership has, Dr. Fagan and your cabinet and the, the curriculum team is just phenomenal. And this is exactly how we're going from good to great. And, and I can't stress that enough. And may call it sappy, you may call it whatever you want to, but I've been here a long time. I've been here a real long time, as it's already been mentioned tonight. But, but I couldn't be more proud and happier to be part of this organization at this point in time. So thank you all very much.
I gotta say, 2021 Love Fest t-shirts going to sell tomorrow.
I know, right? Sappy. I like that. Okay, wonder, fantastic presentation and Dr. Fagan. Seriously. I mean, I was here, I, I was elected the year after you came. But, you know, four years I have seen major strides in what the board's vision was when they hired you. And I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you.
And let's keep on moving. Hopefully, we'll have a smooth year this year though, hopefully. Yeah. Okay, our next item is Item 7B, the 2020-2023 American Rescue Plan ARP Act of 2021, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief ESER III Fund Report.
So this is an information item. I've answered a lot of questions for you all on this topic. And we're here to answer any other questions that you have. But we've, we've gone through the process and actually have a lot of approvals already. Jamie Bryson's here. She's done a lot of the work on this. The, the rules constantly change and are updated, but, but actually in our favor. So we're happy about that part. Billy Beatty's done a lot of work on this also. And we really appreciate, you know, in the middle of everything else, we asked all the departments, okay, you know, what should we be doing? Everybody submitted their requests, which came up to be about $74 million worth. And we only have 35. And, but that's good, right? You know, we've, we've got everything on the table. So we've gone through, prioritized according to the feedback that we've received. And you all authorized a, a, a large chunk of this tonight to our staff. And I think it's worth mentioning that a, a year ago, I've lost track all the time, but our budget before this last one, we didn't provide raises because it was a very uncertain time during COVID. And our goal was to keep the family whole regardless of the financial cuts that we might receive as a district. And so that's what we voted to do and our staff stood in support and then returned in the most uncertain fall with tons of courage and conviction to take attendance in new ways and plan for virtual students and plan for in-person students and plan for trailing grades for kids who change their mind every other week. And I mean, I'm telling you, it was a really, really challenging year. And at the time, we did the fiscally appropriate things to make sure that the district stayed whole and that we had our staff together. And so with this money, we are able to go back and to, to compensate for the tremendous amount of work and courage and performance that our staff showed up with this year to do the literacy assessments and to build virtual learning for a new day and everything else, to do contact tracing more than they ever thought they would have to do. I could go on and on. I won't. I just, I'm so proud of the Umbly SD family, the way that they showed up last year for our students, the way they continue to show up this summer to the professional development. They're ready again to be even better than they were yesterday. And this, this compensation improvement that you all approved tonight is well-deserved. And I'm very happy that this is where a big chunk of our SR3 money will go. And then I'm very proud of the other items that are on this list that are in the best interest of our students and staff.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Our last item, 7C, Financial Services Reports, is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board? Seeing none. Moving to our closing items. Are there any topics for future board business? Yes, Mr. Scarfo?
I had one regarding cybersecurity protocols, but I had talked to Dr. Fagan and she said to me that by the, we are going to actually cover that in our security update, overall security update.
That is correct.
Next month in our closed session. So yeah, I'm happy about that because it was something that was kind of weighing on me. I'm glad we were doing that. So thank you, Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, the time is now 8:35 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.